This for all.
Your question, two? Silence yourself on the count of seven.
First item on the agenda is citizen concerns. Seeing none in the audience, is there any, uh, that's already called in, Andy?
Called in, yeah.
For the good of the public, once again, the number to call if you have comment is 712-224-6014. Item two is approval of the agenda, I'll move it.
Second.
Second by DeWitt, hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes four zero. Items three through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes of the May 12th meeting. Item four is approval of the claims. Item five from Human Resources includes A, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, B, the authorization to initiate the hiring process, and C, approval of request to deauthorize county position. And item six from Secondary Roads to approve the permit to work in the right-of-way for Greg Smith. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Raddick, hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes four zero. Item seven from Board Administration, Dennis Butler for Action is, uh, A, approval of a resolution to set the date for hearing on 2020 Amendment to Urban Renewal Plan for Grow Woodbury County Urban Renewal Area for June 16th at 4:45 PM. Dennis, anything to report?
Um, this actually setting the date to have our amendment, which is not increasing the size of the $10 million, it's just getting more detail of how we're spending the money into the roads, how much gravel we're putting on, things like that. It was, is subject to a reverse referendum, which we've never had in Woodbury County. Take, I think, approximately 3,500 voters to sign a petition to have a reverse referendum, which would be seen whether to pass or not, I think it would, but, but we've never had one. We are going to meet with the school district sergeant bluff. We're going to send them a notice for consultation, which we aren't required to do, but we're going to be open, transparent, and show them exactly what we're doing almost by road. And it shows economic development and public safety. So we have to have that 14 days prior to the hearing day, which we're already, Dave and I are already setting that up to meet with them if they'd like to meet.
Any motion? Move it.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Potabom, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes four zero. Item B is discussion in action regarding the funding source for the DGR agreement involving the 2080 agreement.
Okay, we originally had this set out CIP, it's discovered that according to the essential purposes, this doesn't qualify as a CIP project, so we are recommending now that be paid out of gaming revenues. And I did send a little memo in here where we did have 254,000 allocated in next year's budget. Okay, I've taken in consideration of no revenue at least till July 1st from gaming revenue, depends if they open or not. So with that said, we are down to 100, currently we're down to, if I can find here.
Probably about down to zero if we go a few months.
Well, we're, right now, we're at 350,000, I got some allocations we got to pay out. By the end of the year, we'd have 134,648. I anticipate 175,000 carryover, but again, this does include revenue for two and a half months. So with that said, with those lost there, we would be down to, and with the 15,000, we'll still have unallocated funds of 199,000 left next year, assuming that gaming revenue starts up July 1st again. I would think something by then should happen. So we're recommending take the 15,000 out of gaming revenues, which like I said, will leave us with 199,000 unallocated next fiscal year. Number could be less, it could be more if they get this thing fired up soon. But we know for April, May, there's zero, and March, we only got half, what we normally get. But that's all calculated in here as due state order, voting, no revenue.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second by DeWitt, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes four zero. Item C is approval of a resolution fixing the date of June 2nd at 4:45 PM for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $195,000 for general county purposes, general obligation capital loan notes, and providing publication of notice.
Right, in this case, it was determined by our attorneys that the air truck, and another item here, did not qualify essential purpose, so they're going under general obligation bonds.
Sorry, attorneys of what?
Jason, or our attorneys in Alders.
Okay.
In Des Moines. And before they've been, it, some of this did qualify, but when you change attorneys, it does change certain interpretation, but anyway, um, it's subject to reverse referendum, which again, I said, we never had one in county history. So, you know, it probably won't bother us. So we have 705,000 capital loan notes, which are essential purpose, and 195,000 general county purposes.
What did you say about the air truck?
Did not qualify as a central purpose. See, to me, that's public safety, but according, when they really go into detail on this and do some research, it did qualify.
Since we're not qualified to fund it?
Through essential purpose. Again, through their general obligation for public safety.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just reaching into a different pocket.
Correct. It all comes out of debt service, one way or another, it's all the same. And the good news is, on the 900,000, we did bid it out, our low bid came at 1.39% interest. I don't know where you'd ever find money like that again, ever. Unless the mark goes negative, and I don't know what happens on interest rates.
Besides the 1% on the PPP loans.
Right, right. So that's set in two different dates, or two different hearing dates to set. One for the 195, one's for 705 on June 6th, wait, it'd be June 1st, which we get it published by this Friday, I already talked to the journal. These require four days, but they're waiving that, so we get it published in time. To meet our requirements, 10 days, not less than 10, not more than 20.
You mean fixing the date for June 2nd?
June 2nd, I'm sorry, June 2nd.
I hope it wasn't wrong.
Yeah.
Yep, June 2nd.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Potabom, hearing no other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes four zero. Item D is approval of a resolution fixing the date of June 2nd at 4:46 PM for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $705,000 general obligation capital loan notes of Woodbury County for essential county purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. Same explanation. I'll move it.
Yep.
Second.
Second by DeWitt, discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes four zero. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Item eight from Secondary Roads, county engineer Mark Nero. Includes A for action, approval of contract and bond with Dixon Construction for project number parent C 278 for 175,979.
Uh, the contractor, Dixon Construction, returned their contract and bond for board approval. I recommend approval of the contract.
I'll move it.
Whoa, three-way tie. Uh, motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt, hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes four zero. Item B is approval to accept the tandem truck quotes and return them to the county engineer for an award recommendation.
Notice she doesn't give me this until I'm ready to actually open. She's been warned.
I wouldn't trust you with it either.
We're not even happy about her having it.
I'm really starting to get a complex here. First took away my pocket knife. I did bring bid tabulations.
Are they different than what we have?
If you've already got it, you're in good shape. You got one too?
I don't.
This is the month when we typically take these bids. You need a bigger podium, Mark. Okay, I think we have all the truck bids, so. I like it when our vendors take the time and actually mark which bid it's on the envelope. Now we hope we don't miss anybody. First one is from Cornhusker International Trucks. They're offering two separate proposals for the tandem dump truck. So the first proposal is, uh, purchase price for the truck and equipment, 195,991. 195,991. Trade-in for unit 504, 15,000. Net purchase price with trade, 180,991. You can see why by the size of this wad of paper, why we won't be making a recommendation today. There's a, a lot to look at with these as we go through them. Their second bid is, uh, purchase price truck and equipment, 202,988. 202,988. Trade-in value of 504, 15,000. Net purchase price with trade, 187,988. 187,988. And the reason there's two, just for your information, is there's a couple of places that build the trucks. International, for instance, Cornhusker sells the truck chassis. They send it off to a bodybuilder like Stephen Equipment, or, uh, um, there's a number of them in Sioux Falls, Ford Dodge, other places, and then they might be giving us two choices on the equipments. Next bid is from Peterbilt. Peterbilt, 208,619. Uh, 8500 trade for 504. Net price, 200,119. That's real competitive for Peterbilt. And a second proposal from Peterbilt. 224,842. 8500 trade-in value again. Net purchase price with trade, 216,342. One of the reasons we bid these so far ahead of the fiscal year is, our dump trucks haven't been coming in before February of the following year in many cases. The earliest one, you've seen one lately, has been December, so. Uh, motor graders typically are coming in into September, uh, beginning of October. We're not sure how the loaders will come. This one is from Boyer Trucks of Sioux Falls. Purchase price of truck and equipment, 203,265. 203,265. Trade-in value for unit 504, 25,275. Net purchase price with trade, 177,990. Next is I State of Sioux City. I State has two bids in this envelope. The first one, uh, 196,819. 196,819. Trade-in value for 504, 18,500. Net purchase price with trade, 178,319. Their second bid is 206,408. Trade-in value, 12,000. Net purchase price with trade, 194,408. This is also from I State. The first two trucks were for Western Stars. I'm guessing this is for freight. I guessed correctly. Purchase price truck and equipment, 196,731. 12,000 trade-in. Net purchase price with trade, 184,731. The second bid, 187,142. 18,500 trade-in value. Net purchase price with trade, 168,642. Next, we have Sioux City Truck and Trailer. Purchase price of truck and equipment, 215,171. Less trade-in on 504, 18,000. Net purchase price with trade, 197,171. Next is Reece Truck and Trailer, out of Alton. Purchase price truck and equipment, 212,866 and 10 cents. 212,86610. Less purchase price, or less trade-in value to 504, 24,000. Net purchase price with trade, 188,86610. And the second one from Reece. I know they use truck equipment out of Ford Dodge and Stephen Equipment out of Sioux City. Purchase price of truck and equipment, 203,27710. Less purchase, or less trade-in, 504, 24,000. Net purchase price with trade, 179,27710. And finally, another one for Boyer Trucks. Purchase price of truck and equipment, 193,860. Trade-in value on unit 504, 25,275. Net purchase price with trade, 168,585. That would conclude the truck bids. I recommend the board that, uh, they receive them and turn them over to the county engineer's office for review.
I move to receive and turn them over to the county engineer's office for review.
I'll second the motion by Raddick, hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes four zero. Item C is approval to receive the wheel loader quotes and return them to the county engineer for award recommendation.
You'll recall, we've, uh, bought four excavators in the last four years. We kind of traded through that cycle. Now we're moving on to the end loaders with that, we have nine in the fleet. First one is from Murphy Tractor. Total price, 249,900. 249,900. Trade-in on 422, 45,000. Net price, 204,900. Next is from Writer's Equipment of Sioux City. Have to talk to their salesman about his use of tape. He didn't want us getting in here, apparently. Total price, 195,625. Less trade-in on 422, which is a John, or is a Kamatsu WA380 loader. 32,165. Net price, 163,460.
They bid in a Hyundai then, or?
Yes.
And Murphy was John Deere, right?
Correct. Uh, the next one is from Murd Machinery, RMS of Sioux City. They're bidding a Kamatsu. Their bid is 251,000 plus trade-in on 422, 25,000. Net price, 226, 226,000. Mid Country Machinery is next. They're building, bidding a Hitachi. Total price, 220,250. Trade-in for 422, 30,000. Net price, 190,250. Next is Tightened Machinery. Bidding a Case. Total price, 232,000. Trade-in on 422, 43,500. Net price, 188,500. Finally, we have one from TransSource. Bidding a Volvo. Total price, 237,400. Trade-in on 422, 25,000. Net price, 212,400. That appears to conclude the loaders. I recommend the, uh, board receive them and give them to the county engineer's office for review.
I'll move that.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt, hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes four zero. Item D is approval to accept the motor grader quotes and return them to the county engineer for an award recommendation.
We're taking bids on two motor graders. We typically replace two per year. Our motor grader fleet between 10, 11 years old. These are the machines we rely on heavily for snow removal and, uh, getting folks on the gravel roads out in the winter, so. First bid is from Cat for the Hornick District. Uh, net bid is 325,916. Trade-in value on our current unit number 517, 50,000. Net bid, 275,916. They're also, uh, supplying a bid for Moville District 2. The trade-in there is a, uh, John Deere 770D machine. The, uh, Cat, or the one for Hornick was a Cat 140H. The, uh, net bid again is 325,916. The John Deere trade, 41,500. Net price, 284,416. And the next bid is from Murphy Crafter. We only allow the bids on Cat and the John Deere. Both of these dealers have demonstrated their ability to support the machines, which gets really important when the snow's flying. They're able to typically get parts for us within 48 hours or less. They have, uh, both proven to have good service and, uh, get our machines out on the road quickly. They have both proven to have good service and get our machines out on the road quickly. For the Hornick District, again, trading a one forty H Cat. Net bid, three hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. Trade in value on the one forty H, fifty-seven thousand. Net bid with trade in, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. For the Mowville District, three hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. For the motor grater, thirty-seven thousand for the trade unit. Uh, net price, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. And that is the conclusion of the motor grater bids. I recommend the board receive them, return them to county engineer for review and recommendation.
I'll move that.
Second the motion by Radek. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
O S N A, passes four zero. Thank you. At long last, we come to it, item nine from Supervisor Radek. For action is approval of Articles of Agreement for Workforce Development, Chief Elected Official Consortium, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of 2014.
At long last indeed, uh, so it's been a long time coming that we've gotten all these counties together and moving forward with this, uh, workforce development agreement. I've been tapped to work on the bylaws here as well, so I'll be bringing those probably, I don't know if that has to come before the board or if that just goes through our new region, but, a few counties have already approved this, we're just, uh, next in line, so. Uh, with that, I'll make a motion that we pass the twenty-eight E agreement here.
I'll second the motion by Radek. So does that mean you may be the chief lead elected official?
I am not, that's Wayne Miller from Cherokee County.
I like the title of the vice chief lead elected official.
Yeah, we, we picked a vice Clio from the previous other regions as well, so, uh, Region eight and twelve or thirteen were all represented in the, leadership of the, the new organization and I'm like a vice vice Clio.
Well, there's two of them, so you could have a senior vice chief lead elected official. Feel really important.
This is gone before the legal department, PJ and Joshua both have gotten an emailed version of this and no concerns were heard.
Great. Thanks for bringing it forward. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
O S N A, passes four zero. Item ten again for action is due to COVID-19. The board will be discussing various issues and may take appropriate steps for the protection and safety of both the community and county employees. Do board members have any, uh, updates on this issue, requests for action? Any from department heads?
Our doors are still locked and it's the world award. We can reopen at some point. One of the things we're working on right now is getting some sneeze guards for the two counters for the ladies. Plexiglass is a little hard to find. So, we're wait, uh, correction, the lumber was supposed to get in a shipment and let us know if they had any of the appropriate size here, so. Does the board have any inclination when they want their outside offices to reopen? We've been able to manage, uh, I don't think we really skipped a beat on meeting appointments. We've been meeting people out in the field. Uh, we've been able to email all types of permits that might be needed, whether they're driveway or permits to work within the right of way. And we've been able to keep up with them all that way, so. I guess I'm putting it in your hands right now when you would like us to look at resuming. I wouldn't say before June one.
You would say what?
I wouldn't say before June one. I'd like to think I'll be able to get some kind of a counter shield in place. We just don't have enough room to separate customers from our clerk and office manager. Uh, that's only a six foot wide area between their two desks, so. Um, basically when people come in, there's my clerk right below them, so. If you've been out to our office, you know how tight that entrance area works and. And again, I, I really think we've minimized inconvenience to the public as far as, uh, addressing needs for permitting driveways or maintenance, so. Again, we look to the board for what your desires are on that and, uh, my recommendation wouldn't be before June one.
Would be before?
Would not be before June.
Well, obviously the board's action on the courthouse is effective through June second. So it wouldn't be before June one that we would recommend, at least I would recommend.
We can target that and I'll give you an update next week with how we're coming for the protection of folks.
Okay.
Thank you.
You do the clear plastic sheeting with two by fours and?
That's, that's what we're looking at.
No, instead of like plexiglass, it's just the?
Oh, just clear plastic?
Like the point five mil plastic sheets, that is, a lot of places did that around town. It's kind of tacky, but it's a lot cheaper and not permanent.
We, we're, we're spanning, you know, our, our windows are not small, so we're spanning, uh, five feet is what we measured. If I can get it, I think plexi would be a little better.
Sure.
Uh, cost on, if you could get it at Lowe's or Menards, it, uh, for a twenty-four inch by sixty inch sheet, most of those are coming in around thirty-five. Then like you say, a couple of two by four framework to hold.
Mounted?
And, uh, it's not horribly expensive to put together. I'd rather have something that's, uh, a little sturdier, especially since we're spanning a pretty good distance.
Have any officers noticed, uh, more or less requests for appointments or attempted walk-ins in previous weeks?
We're still doing, uh, curbside voting and hasn't been, uh, real busy. The, we've had over fifteen thousand absentee requests for the primary election that we usually average about eighty-five, so we're more than double. And that's for turnout, including Election Day. Andrew Wick, could you update us on the, that security meeting that we listened to yesterday?
Todd Wick, Sheriff's Office. On Monday morning at eight-thirty, uh, we had a building security committee meeting via team, right Andy? Microsoft team? Uh, I had received, uh, on Friday morning last week, I'd received a request to fill out a survey from ISAC and the Iowa Judicial Branch, on whether or not they thought it was feasible, we could increase, uh, court hearings and so forth in the courthouse by June first. And, uh, a couple of different people have been involved in some committee meetings at that level with our county. And, uh, there's, for the most part, I was informed that, uh, the judicial branch really isn't looking at doing anything as far as, uh, criminal jury trials until July fifteenth and a lot of civil trials until sometime in August. So, June first was a little aggressive for trying to get something, uh, more business opened up in the courthouse, so. Basically, we just gonna have to work with the board on, on the board's decision on how, uh, what we do with the courthouse and the other two buildings, but, probably have to start working on some sort of a, a plan, uh, with different phases in it. A little bit like, uh, I've, I've read some, uh, some emails and some notes from Dickinson County and O'Brien County. And they, they've got, uh, they've started a plan as to how they're gonna get the buildings back open, but they don't have any dates involved in them yet.
Are those counties coming from a position of being closed?
They are closed, yes. I know Dickinson County for sure, their courthouse is closed. It's not even open to appointments.
Yeah, I was surprised that, uh, when the judiciary came and talked to us is that, uh, they wanted to open by appointment, said that they couldn't close and, and then I found out all those other courthouses have been closed.
Yeah.
Completely closed too.
I was not aware of that either.
I had a call from a Webster County Supervisor wanting to know if we, if I would share our plan on how we're gonna reopen the courthouse.
Right.
We're, so we're a little ahead of the game already because?
Oh, 'cause they close there.
Yes, yeah. And so I indicated that after the meeting, then I filled out the survey that they went, it was a six, six question survey. I filled it out and they're supposed to hold more meetings. I think their next meeting was set for this Thursday, the twenty-first.
So based on what we know about the judicial branch and the date that ISAC is sending out these surveys about it, it basically, targeted a date that didn't really match what anyone was requesting.
Not at all.
So it's just?
They, I, I don't know where they, where or who came up with the idea of June?
They just want to be involved.
I, yeah, I guess so.
Be part of the, part of the discussion.
This was May, so June first was?
Next couple of weeks, we should probably start looking at some sort of a plan, uh, not necessarily put any dates behind it, but at least have a plan, different phases as to what we can do. We'll have to work with the judicial branch, with Judge Hoffmeyer, Peggy and, and obviously you. But we'll get that organized and get it going.
One of the things that, uh, we're concerned with in the auditor's office is that, uh, June second is the primary election. And then you'll have a special election right after that and, uh, probably not a good idea to open it up right away because we'll have, uh, we would have people, uh, who want to come in and do in-person voting at that time. We would still like to leave it at, uh, curbside voting at that point. But it, uh, was, they've got a while to look at it, but, uh, that would be our concern.
Could that be addressed independently of other courthouse access procedures?
If we, you know, leave it curbside, uh, I think, uh, we would probably see more use of that if we left it curbside, but, uh, it's just that, uh, I know other offices would be concerned with the amount of traffic increase that coming into the courthouse if, uh, we open it up. We're trying to balance that, uh, you know, folks that do want to come in and, and vote, uh, but, uh, also balance concerns of the employees that, aren't so excited about seeing increased traffic in the courthouse.
Okay, well, when you know something about any questions the judicial branch has on?
I asked, uh, when I completed the survey, the survey that I sent, I asked that they obviously keep, communicate with us if anything changes at that level. And then of course, anybody that's attending any of these meetings, I know, uh, PJ was attending some meetings, uh, and I think, uh, I remember somebody else mentioned, Kevin Green from Zuland District Health had been in an ISAC meeting where some of this was discussed, but, everybody just needs to communicate and put together a plan, figure out the dates for everything later on, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
But overall, the appointment approach so far hasn't, hasn't been a pressure on the front doors?
No, uh, actually it has worked very well, I think.
Good. Well, it's not really obstructive as long as there's not a pent-up demand to, and at this point or in the next few weeks, so. Any other discussion topics on this? Anyone on the line, Andy? All right. Um, moving on to item eleven, reports on committee meetings?
No, just the one that I mentioned earlier that I was gonna be working on the bylaws for workforce development.
How often is that going to be a, a meeting scheduled?
We've been meeting like a couple times a week or weekly or just depending.
Where?
Uh, Zooming.
Right. Where would it be?
Uh, they're talking in the future here, it'll meet maybe in Ottawa. Not sure.
Okay.
Might rotate around since it is eighteen counties.
Yeah. All right. Any citizen concerns? That's an easy question. There's zero here, zero on the line. Only way we could have one of those is someone came out of the elevator right now.
Michelle Scaff, Deputy Auditor, reported that, uh, they started the emailing, uh, check stubs to you. The folks got those?
Yep.
Two hundred and sixty-four, I think, are participating. Still haven't heard anything from the sheriff's office, but, uh, that's, it's a good start.
Good, yeah, it worked fine for me. Good news. Moving on to item thirteen, any board concerns? All right, we're adjourned.